Okay, we're gonna get started. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yep, someone? Okay, perfect. Okay, this is the Baltimore City Council Budget Appropriations Committee. We're here today for Council Bill 20-0527, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. I'm Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined by, in chambers with Councilman Bill Henry, 4th District. And then on WebEx, we have Councilwoman Danny McPray, 2nd District; Councilman Leon Pinkett, Vice Chair of the Committee, 7th District; Councilwoman Shannon Snead, 13th District; Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District; Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District; Councilman Isaac Gitze Schleifer, 5th District; And then we have Matt Stegman and Nina Themos on behalf of Jack Young; We have Dominic McIlly; Kalen Young and Rebecca Simmons on behalf of Council President's staff; And then staff to the committees, Marguerite Curran, who has been making this entire week run very smoothly. So, thank you, Marguerite. With that, we are here for Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, more commonly referred to in City Hall as MOCJ. We have Director Govan. Director, you are up. Take it away. And if you could keep your presentation to somewhere in the 10 to 15 minute range, that would be greatly appreciated. And you're on mute, ma'am. You're on mute. Yep.
Can you hear me?
Perfect.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President, Committee Chair, and to the Honorable City Council. I'm grateful for the opportunity to give an overview of the budget of the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice. Just to give some context, I assumed the role of MOCJ Director in December 2019, after two years of working on the Baltimore I Team in the Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation. I entered the team, getting right to learning all the extraordinary moving parts of MOCJ, forming relationships with staff and partners, addressing the agency needs, and leading and supporting the team in the very important work that we do. We have forged ahead with a mantra of communication, collaboration, and compassion. Three months in, we, like our city and the world, were thrust into a pandemic that changed everything that we knew as normal. Still, we have pressed on to do the much-needed work for the people of Baltimore. At this point, I'll go into the presentation. Thank you. And next slide, please. So we'll start with Service Number 617 of Criminal Justice Coordination. In this service, it's our Sexual Assault Response Team, also known as SART, and the Human Trafficking Collaborative. The SART and Human Trafficking Coordinators lead the coordination efforts among a vast array of stakeholders with the goals of reducing incidences, raising awareness through training and education, and supporting survivors through the provision of quality services through a victim-centered, trauma-informed response. Just last week, we held, in collaboration with our partners, the first citywide convening of hospitals to discuss their roles in the provision of care to human trafficking survivors. The meeting was important because, as the study found, a significant percentage of domestic minor sex trafficking survivors interact with a medical provider a year prior to being identified and referred to service providers. Also in this service is our youth justice work. Here, we are working with an array of partners as well, with the goal of reforming elements of the youth justice system for better outcomes for youth. Our Supervised Visitation Center, excuse me, Supervised Visitation Center also sits in this service and provides families with domestic violence or child abuse incidences, a safe place to do child exchanges and visitations. Recognizing that the perpetrators often have a background filled with trauma, we are starting to investigate ways to work with these individuals within the programming at the Visitation Center. In regards to major budget items, I will highlight that we have budgeted for a Dada Fellow, which is a significant need for MOCJ. And also, and I'll stop right there, that's one of the needs without highlight for MOCJ. And you also see that we have included some of the outputs and effectiveness measures, metrics, for Service Number 617. And I'll go on to the next slide. So, Service Number 618, that's our Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. This service includes Safe Streets, a public health approach that focuses on conflict mediation and community mobilization to reduce gun violence. There are eight community sites, with two coming onboard, and five hospital responder sites. Want to highlight a recent OSI blueprint for Baltimore survey that showed that Baltimore residents would like to see Safe Streets in more communities. Operating the program is a significant undertaking. The staff is dedicated to not only fulfilling the mission of Safe Streets, but also improving the lives of the site staff who have the live experience that makes them relatable to the populations with which they work. The Violence Interrupters went above and beyond their roles in the community sites, coordinating food and supplies and disseminating educational materials about COVID-19 and social distancing guidelines in the past weeks and months. This service also includes funding that goes to ROKA, which also focuses on high-risk young men. They do this with relentless outreach, relationships, and cognitive behavioral therapy that focuses heavily on brain science to help young men make better decisions that would lead them away from either killing or being killed themselves and imprisonment. And here, I'll point out the major budget items. $400,000 for the Baltimore Community Intelligence Center. That will provide case management that will be at each of the four sites, or will help support these four sites. And that case management is essential because, again, when we work with individuals or within the gun violence, we also know that there are underlying root issues that we need to address. And this case management will allow us to provide, connect individuals to the support that they need. I'll also mention, just say a little bit about the $810,000 in our major budget items. That is for the Project Safe Neighborhoods grant, also PSN. And in that grant, we are funding one reentry coordinator, excuse me. We are also supporting with the funding one Special Assistant U.S. State's Attorney, or Salsa for short. And we are also doing an evaluation that we are working on with Johns Hopkins to identify the parameters of that evaluation. Part of that money is also dedicated to a gun violence campaign. So, the iCare campaign is a collaboration between the U.S. Attorney, BPD, and MOCJ. And it launched in April with a message of wanting to identify and highlight a lot of the on-the-ground organizations and individuals that are working to do better here in Baltimore and to encourage others to join in, to collaborate, and join the effort. Also here, at the bottom of the page, you'll see some of the outputs and effectiveness measures that we have included. Next, I'll go to Service Number 757, that's CityWatch. That's the next slide. Thank you. So, first, I would like to say that on the panel, we have Matt Rappaport, Major Sam Hood, and Stephon Waters from BSIT, who are on the panel to assist with any questions on CityWatch. What I'll highlight for the service is that CityWatch is the city's network of CCTV cameras. We have approximately 800 cameras, and as the slide says, to monitor and maintain the cameras, there's a cost of $2.2 million. And the $750,000 is for the gunshot detection that accompanies this camera system. In a few days, the program will launch a pilot of a camera rebate and voucher program for residents and small businesses, which comes out of the bill that Councilman Costello introduced and was passed in March. The rebate voucher program was created to incentivize qualified homeowners, renters, and small business owners to participate in the CityWatch Community Partnership. Matt Rappaport has done a great job coordinating the agencies in preparation for this launch, which, again, will be launching in a few days. Within this description, I have covered the major budget items. So, again, that's the $2.2 million that is for the cameras and the maintenance and monitoring, and the $750,000 that goes for the gunshot detection. Output and effective measures are included as well below. And on the next slide is Service Number 758. And that is our Coordination of Public Safety Strategy. And in that service number, what I'll highlight is the recent hiring of our Grants and Contracts Administrator. Grants and Contracts, or grants, as you know, is a major function, major role for MOCJ. And so, that was a major need that we had, and we're happy to have filled that need. And the Grants Manager is getting up to speed, but also has her eye toward creating a process for our Grants Management System within MOCJ. Also, learning about the needs of the agency for grant-matching purposes, and also an eye toward how eventually we will be looking at measurements and how we use our grant dollars to fund initiatives and assess the impact. And that is the last slide.
Director, thank you. Greatly appreciated. I have a, I got a question. Just bear with me. I'm pulling it up in my notes here. Just give me one second. Sorry, I got hundreds of questions here. Okay, so I had sent a request over to Matt Stegman, and he let me know he forwarded it to you. Just because I didn't want to catch you off-guard, just wanted you to be prepared to answer it. I've heard from a few of my elected counterparts in the General Assembly that there may be a budget shortfall in the Safe Streets Program for fiscal year 2021. First, could you please confirm if this is correct, and if so, how much?
So, yes, I could confirm that that is correct. And also, we are, depending on whether we get an extension of our VIP funds, the shortfall will be about $800,000. And Matt Stegman also could answer a little bit more about the process that we have taken to address the shortfall. We've been hard at work, working on this issue, and Matt Stegman could highlight what we've done so far.
Yeah, Director.
Matt, real quick, the number was 800,000?
Approximately $800,000 if the VIP funding is extended.
Got it. Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, so this is actually an issue that we identified back in the fall and made a priority during the legislative session. And the Mayor's Office of Government Relations, in collaboration with MSCJ, we were able to get legislation passed with Assembly members on securing permission. Unfortunately, the legislation that we passed on the use of the funds was vetoed by Governor Hogan, and we are hopeful that there may be an opportunity either to reintroduce that bill next session, or possibly override that veto. But that's a continuing conversation we're having with our General Assembly partners. So, we've been in contact with them a number of times and are continuing to work very hard to resolve this.
So, the cause of that was essentially the legislation being vetoed?
Yeah, correct. So, one of the pots of money that's available for Safe Streets, there is an annual mandate to provide funding. It's a legislation called the Tyrone Ray Safe Streets Act. And in that bill, there is a per-site cap. And because of that cap, we're not able to use all of the money that is allocated. The previous administration had planned on expanding the program faster than, you know, has proved to actually be feasible. So, we had legislation that would have raised the cap so we could use all that money and also provided additional flexibility to use it more efficiently and help it stretch farther. So, again, that was something that we worked very hard on and got passed right at the very end of the abbreviated session. And because it was part of a bill that had a funding mandate, the governor did veto it.
Got it. So, if that doesn't get corrected, what do we think the impact is on specific Safe Street sites within the city?
Well, right now, we are operating under the vision of making sure all Safe Street sites remain operational. So, we are combing our budget right now to see what opportunities that we could pull from our fiscal year 20 funds, because we have been given a request to submit requests for carryover. So, we're looking at that. We are adjusting budgets for the community-based organizations as well, again, with the goal of keeping these sites operational. So, it is very important for us that, as we look through our budget and identify fiscal year 20 budget, that is, and take this opportunity that we have to express what we could carry over, that could be an opportunity to fill that gap.
Thank you. And just the fourth question I have, I think you answered it already. But there has been close coordination with our city delegation on this matter.
Yeah, we've talked to them, obviously, we've talked to them daily during the legislative session. And since the governor's announcement, we've been in touch with them numerous times and continue to do so.
Great. Thanks so much, Matt. Councilman Henry, I'm going to turn it over to you to chair, because I'm having some technical issues with connecting to the internet.
Not a problem, Mr. Chair. Let's go to the members of the committee, both in order of protocol. And the next person on the grid is Councilman Pinkett, Vice Chair of the Committee.
Thank you, Councilman Henry. My first question is in reference to Service 618, Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. And there's a performance measure. It says percentage of ROKA participants rearrested. For fiscal 2019, the target was 35%, but the actual was 30. So, it looks like even at our best, we're looking at a third of the participants, because it looks like it's about 141, a third of the participants either being rearrested or being re-engaged with the criminal justice system. Can you speak to how effective the ROKA program has been? And should we have expectations of higher than a third of the young people that we come encounter with not being rearrested? It doesn't seem like a really lofty... Well, I guess it is, but can you speak to the effectiveness of ROKA?
I would say that ROKA has been working with young, high-risk young men. The program started in Massachusetts and came to Baltimore with very high, very much, very highly rated success on working with young, high-risk individuals. Right now, ROKA is in the process of setting up this evaluation. They are in the process of creating benchmarks, and so that's something that we are looking to get from them. And they will create an evaluation that is more in-depth to show the impact of their activities and their outreach and their work. So, right now, we have just the outcomes that we have so far, the number of men that they are working with, et cetera. But it is a plan, a goal, to get some benchmarks and also to have an evaluation of that program.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's critical. I mean, there was a significant investment made in ROKA. Very, very significant investment. And so, those benchmarks would be critical. And also to know if we are achieving either the same results as was experienced in Massachusetts, or are we trailing? I mean, it came highly promoted, and it's dealing with, you know, one of the most critical populations in our city. So, the sooner we can get those benchmarks, the better. My second question is related to Service 757 with CityWatch.
Yes.
It's two questions, actually. The first is number of arrests assisted and/or initiated by CityWatch. And for fiscal 2019, the actual was 323, with targets of 350 for fiscal 19, 20, and 21. Do you know how many arrests we make in the city annually?
I'm going to turn over the questions about CityWatch to the panel, if you don't mind.
And if I can, let me tell you why I'm asking, because it just seems like a very small number compared to the total amount of arrests that we have in the city. And so, just, is it that the cameras are that much of a preventive measure? Or are they not beneficial as relates to arrests? Because obviously, the number of arrests are in the tens of thousands. I think, but I could be wrong. But go ahead.
Director, I can jump in. Can folks hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, Councilman. I would turn it over to Major Sam Hood, who I presume is with us. I know he's occupied with Obligations and Incident Command Center. But we can get you the data you seek in a short period of time. He can have that over to you.
Okay. And in addition to that, in that case, have we ever done an audit on our CityWatch system so that we can tell, you know, the numbers of cameras that are actually working? If cameras are down, what's the turnaround time between when they are identified? Because, you know, anecdotally, I've heard of situations where cameras aren't even working. And so, there's been a delay in getting those cameras fixed. And if we're going to utilize...
Sure.
We realize that we're not going to ever get enough officers to cover the streets, you know, as some of our strategies call for. And so, we've got to use technology, and it's got to be, you know, smart, placed appropriately, and the like. And so, just want to make certain that the tool is working and the tool is being implemented in the way that it needs to.
Agreed. So, I can tell you that the downtime we shoot for, and that we are tracking successfully now, is about 95% uptime for all cameras. And the turnaround time on getting a camera back up is very variable, because, for instance, we have many cameras go down due to motor vehicle accidents. And when you're finding a remedy for that issue, you have to worry about the poles you have in stock, where they're being placed, if it's a special pole because due to historic preservation issues. So, some things can take, it can take over a month to get a camera back up. If it's a slip ring or just a technical issue, usually we have the cameras in stock, and we can get them up in 48 hours. So, it's very variable to turn around on a repair and maintenance project. I don't know, I'm not aware of an audit that has been done, but I can totally inquire and get you any record of work if it has been done.
Chairman Henry, if I could ask one other question that's related to cameras as well?
Sure. And then we'll turn it back over to Chairman Costello.
One of the gas stations in my district, they've installed cameras that also allow for voice, where the individual who's monitoring the camera, their voice can actually be heard audibly. Have we explored those types of cameras so that it kind of multiplies our force? So, you know, somebody who's watching the cameras also has a vocal presence in that particular area as well. No different than, you know, the Ring camera that somebody would have on their home. It also provides that level of deterrent when you can literally say, hey, guy in the blue shirt, I see you.
Agreed.
Are we exploring the use of that type of technology as well?
Stephon, is that something you're able to chime in on?
Yeah. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I apologize. I can't seem to get my camera working, and I'm the technical guy. But, yeah, we experimented. All the cameras have that capability. We experimented with that several years ago. I guess that the outcome wasn't that it was that effective. So, or that we didn't have the resources to put somebody behind a speaker to do that. So, we never really went any further, but it's a good idea to me. The scenario described makes sense, so we could surely investigate further. It's not a heavy lift to do it.
Yeah, it seems to me the limitation would be actually getting someone on the other side of the camera when the time is right, in real time, to do the speaking. Because we only have a handful, two to six camera monitors. These folks are operating all the time, but they can only look at so much of the city. And so, the limitation is the actual availability of a human voice.
Thank you. I know that in some instances, businesses have allowed Western District to utilize their cameras. So, you know, to kind of take advantage of the officers that are, you know, working out of the district. But I just think it's something that we should explore. So, thank you, Chairman Henry.
Agreed.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Turning it back over to Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a quick follow-up question, Director, on the Safe Streets issue. Do we know if there's funds elsewhere in the MOCJ budget that could be reallocated to fill the gap? I know that we do have some unallocated line items in that budget.
So, that's the exercise that we're going through right now. As I mentioned earlier, we are, and I believe the Fiscal Administrator is on the line who could tell us specifics. I'm just looking to see if she's on the line. But yes, we are going to be combing through the MOCJ budget and to see where we could perhaps leverage the funding in some line items as well, in addition to the carryover that I talked about. So, we'll be looking at that. I would say that with the budget modifications post-COVID, you know, we are, like many agencies, very tight. But we will be looking at all options for this.
So, we don't necessarily have a timeframe for when that analysis is going to be completed?
We are doing it right now, like in the next couple of days. We should be early next week, mid-next week. I plan to meet with the Fiscal Administrator, and that was something that I did tell her I wanted to speak with her about. So, we will be looking definitely at the carryover, and we'll be looking at that as well. I do think that there could be some opportunity. But again, looking at all options within our budget realm.
So, I want to, I want to... Oh, Matt, yeah, okay. I want to challenge you, Director. I'd like for you to get back to this committee, a plan, by Monday morning, no later than 10:00 a.m. I think it's critically important that we understand this Safe Streets piece as soon as humanly possible. So, I would ask that you have those conversations with your CFO or, you know, finance person, and get back to me in writing by no later than 10:00 a.m. on Monday, June 15. Thank you so much, Director. I appreciate that. Chairman Henry, back to you, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Going now to Councilwoman Snead. Are you saying I'm not muted?
No, I'm sorry. I was just trying to be recognized. I wanted to, sorry. I wanted to go back and just to update on Councilman Pinkett's previous question. He had asked about the total number of arrests. I did reach out to BPD to get that information. And year-to-date in 2020, this is through the end of May, that number is 128. And for 2019, that was 335. Yeah, so again, when they're talking about arrests, it's, you know, not just when somebody is detained. It's an actual arrest. So, that's the realm that we're talking about.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm having difficulty telling the difference between when you're just trying to get my attention to be helpful as the person who's in the room, and when you're actually trying to be recognized. So, we'll work on that. But let's go to Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you. Director, I'm just curious. I'm pretty sure you've seen, you know, in your short time as the Director of things that can just be improved, policy that needs to be changed. And I'm wondering if you've worked with any of the council members to change any of the policies to remove some of the barriers that you see to help some of our constituents and our citizens of Baltimore City.
And Councilwoman Snead, just could you repeat that again? I'm sorry.
I was wondering, in your short time as the Director, some things... I was wondering in your short time as the, the Director, some things don't come down to money, but just removing certain barriers and sometimes just the policy. So I'm wondering if you have sought out or worked with any other council members, um, to remove what you find to be some of the barriers, um, that could potentially help some of the citizens in our communities.
Uh, in M O C J, we are doing work that will, that, like you said, is not about the money, but it's more about the policy. And so, for example, with our youth justice work, we're working with a number of stakeholders to look at the youth justice system and find that places in that system where we want to divert youth away from the justice system. And so it's more about what, how are things done now? And what are the other opportunities that we could, uh, realign, reconfigure to, uh, provide a better solution? And in, in regards to money, in the case of youth justice, uh, there's research that show that working through community-based organizations, so instead of, uh, turning towards, uh, uh, youth justice and detainment, you know, if you, uh, uh, use community-based organizations and route youth through there, you get better outcomes and it's cheaper. So even in, in situations like that, sometimes we're putting dollars towards something that's not giving us the best outcome. And there's, in, in that scenario, there's been research that shows there's a, a cheaper outcome and a, a cheaper way and a better outcome for our youth. Uh, so we're working with a number of stakeholders, uh, to, uh, work, look at the youth justice system. So for example, I'll give you a concrete example of one where we are looking at, uh, uh, arrests, youth interaction at, at arrests. And so there's an opportunity if youth are committing misdemeanors to, uh, redirect them to, uh, again, community-based organizations or some of the organizations that can help with the, the challenges or needs of that youth and, and take them away from, let's say, for instance, sending them to, uh, the Juvenile, uh, Justice Center. So, um, I would say that we are working with a number of stakeholders on, uh, examples like that. I would say another example of something that we would like, that we are, have on our radar is, uh, the coordination in the reentry space. And so we are going to hire a reentry coordinator and that person is not going to be focusing on, will be focusing on how stakeholders, uh, uh, work together and what are the system-level things that are happening and how could they work better? So our human traffic collaborative, collaborative, again, looking at how stakeholders are working together, how could things be reorganized or just finding the opportunities that, yes, sometimes it might be, um, about the, the funding, but it might be about how things are done and can they be done differently? I welcome the opportunity to speak, um, with, uh, and we certainly will bring in, uh, work with the council to keep them abreast of, of the, the type of work that we're doing. But I think there are a number of examples where we are queued up to challenge, uh, the policy and the way things are done and how could they be done? And, and see how they can be done differently.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Madam Councilperson. Okay, since none of the other committee members have hands up yet, I, I'm going to ask some of my questions. Um, the first one is, I'm trying to pick a good one here. Uh, let's start with, uh, the specifics on Service 617. Um, why are we cutting the budget for the Sexual Assault Response Team? Uh, it doesn't seem to be the result of a decrease in federal or state grant.
Uh, well, the one thing that I recall was in, in, um, last year, and this might be carrying over into this year, and I'm looking specifically, let me just look at my numbers here. And is there a way to bring up that, that slide?
Um, that would require asking Mr. Segman to bring up the slide for Service 617. Oh, you, you can bring it up yourself.
I can bring it up?
Yeah. Okay.
Um, and so with that, what I'll say is we were, last year, and this might be carryover into this year. I could, I, ultimately I would have to come back and give a response, uh, if I have the opportunity to respond after this. I could follow up. But, um, what I would say is, I know that there was in, uh, some grant application, uh, uh, situation last year where we had to, uh, get our coordinators for sexual assault and for human trafficking onto the, the BPD grant. Uh, because of some issues, we didn't get everything that the, the coordinators, uh, do. So like marketing, et cetera, some of the budget items onto that. And we're actually in the process of talking through some of the additional budgeted items that we would like to get into the next year grants. I, that might be part of it. I could go back and double check and, and return a response on that.
That, that would be helpful. It would be good to know if, um, if this is a, just a cut on paper that's not going to have a service impact, or if there is an actual service reduction that's going to be responding, that, that's going to go along with that reduction. Um, the next question, um, I would ask is a more conceptual one, which is, why is, uh, 757 City Watch under M O C J in the first place and not under the Police Department?
Okay, so I, that's a historical decision that was made. I'm going to ask, uh, Matt Rappaport to, to, uh, answer that one, if Matt is still on the, on the line.
Sure. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good afternoon, Councilman. So this, this is going back since the inception of the City Watch program in, uh, 2005. The idea was because, uh, there are three primary partners being BSC, BPD, and the Mayor's Office. The way to shield the program, uh, was to station it centrally in the Mayor's Office. Um, and because it, it is intended to be seen not as only as a, as a public safety tool, but as a public, uh, service response tool, whether it's coordinating fire, EMS, DOT, DPW. The intention is for it to be see, be perceived, uh, as more widely utilized, um, that it should live in the Mayor's Office. And again, that, that's a legacy decision, uh, going back well over a decade now.
Okay. All right. Now, I'll, 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 I'm sorry. Do you have more?
And I wanted to go back to your first question, if I had an opportunity. I just wanted to answer your point about service reduction. Uh, the Sexual Assault Response Team, uh, what our, what we do at M O C J is provide the coordination of stakeholders. So the coordinator is speaking with a number of organizations that are working with victims, uh, working with, uh, law enforcement, uh, and so coordinating these partners to make sure that we are talking, that we are, um, um, one of the things we're interested in is looking at the experience of, of victims and making sure, taking a survey of, from them to understand from their perspective how they engage with, uh, the different partners around the table. So it's a lot about coordination. There are some things that, like in the situation I described to you with the, uh, the grant application situation that happened where some marketing funds were, um, were not, uh, secured for human trafficking, et cetera, that we're trying to get back into our, our budget again. But as far as the services, many of the services lie with our partners and we are making sure that we are coordinating the dialogue and making sure that that, so that's not cut. We have our coordinators still in place.
Oh, I, well, I mean, that's, that's good to hear because I look at it from the perspective that effective coordination is service. So if, if you're still providing the effective coordination, then you're not reducing the service. Um, okay. So I, that's, that's two for me and I'm going to pause there and, um, move on to check my committee members. Uh, next up in the grid would be, uh, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I couldn't figure out how to, uh, digitally raise my hand. Uh, but I, I'd say you literally asked the question I was going to ask. Um, so I'll just look for the response on the Sexual, Sexual Assault Response Team, um, as well. That was the question I had. Um, and then I guess the other piece, um, that I'd like some follow-up, which is confirmation, uh, in Service 617, uh, activity for human trafficking. As you know, um, co-chair of the Human Trafficking Collaborative, worked very closely with Tom Stack and want to just want to shout out, he's doing an amazing job in that role. Um, just wanted to ask if that allocation was for the, uh, the, the grant fund? Uh, or was that for any other activities? Um, if you knew offhand, if not, I can take the email offline or the follow-up offline.
So the allocation, uh, is for, according to my notes, uh, for grant funds, uh, for the grant funds. And I do want to take the opportunity to thank you for your support of the Human Trafficking Collaborative and the work that Tom Stack does. Uh, thank you so much for that. But to answer your question, based on my notes here, I'm just taking a look at that supports the, the grants.
Perfect. Okay. Uh, and I'll, again, I'll wait to follow up on the, uh, the Sexual Assault piece, but everything else I was going to ask, uh, it's already been asked, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, next up, uh, checking in on Councilwoman McCray. Councilwoman, do you have any questions for M O C J?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no questions at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, next up, we have Councilwoman Sharon Middleton. Council, I'm sorry, Madam Vice President, do you have any questions for M O C J?
Um, just one, uh, it's, are there any plans for expansion of Safe Streets to other, to any other new communities?
Uh, that's a great question. Uh, right now, we are, Safe Streets, uh, expanded from four to 10 sites. So right now we're eight, bringing two onboard, uh, very quickly. Um, and as I mentioned in my opening remarks, that is a huge undertaking. Um, and the staff, uh, we probably, um, the staff is, is, has their hands more than full with, with getting the, uh, new sites, uh, up and running. So I would say for now, we are, uh, working on the, really filling out the expansion that we're doing. Um, and to really expand that, we'll call in a number of questions like staffing to support that. Um, but, uh, right now we are working on getting these other six up and running to bring on the full 10.
Thank you. I know that they, um, you know, with this, uh, COVID, COVID pandemic, I know that they're in the streets doing other things and also helping with food distribution and so on. Uh, have, are there, have there been any cases reported with, uh, Safe Streets employees getting, uh, the virus as of today?
Uh, as of today, no.
Okay. Good. That's good to hear.
We took, they were very, um, the, the, the staff was very, very, the team is a wonderful team and they were really work hard to make sure that they had the PPE. Uh, the EOC has been very supportive of getting PPE to them. And so they have been really diligent in making sure that the staff is protected, uh, so that they could carry out the message to communities, how to protect themselves as well.
That, that's good to know. I noticed, uh, they do have Safe Streets, um, face masks.
Yes.
So, um, okay, that, that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Uh, last councilperson for this round would be Councilman Schleifer. Councilman, do you have any questions for M O C J?
Um, no, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, uh, we're going to go back and start again for the second round. And, um, I'm going to actually jump in real quick with the, the second part of a question that I asked earlier. Uh, I got, I, I'm, I think I understand the question of why City Watch is under M O C J. Uh, do we have, um, do we have a return on investment number for that? Do we have, uh, successful prosecutions as opposed to just, we've made a lot of arrests, um, off of what we see on the cameras? Do we have specific numbers as to how many successful prosecutions we've had using the, um, using the cameras from City Watch?
I, I don't know of a number off the top of my head. Uh, I'll defer to Major Samod if he's with us. Sam, are you with us? I guess not. Um, I'm writing it down. I'm going to follow up for you.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I would, I would also make sure that, uh, Mr. Segman has that as one of the official requests from the committee to get the list of, or the, the total number of successful prosecutions that have stemmed from, uh, the use of City Watch cameras over the years. Uh, as, as far back as you can give us, or at least say the last three, um, preferably five. Um, but then the second question I would, um, ask about here, this is a very specific one. If you look at the, if you look at the chart for the Safe Streets, um, metric, the goal for Safe Streets back in fiscal 16 was 790, I'm sorry, the actual number of community mediations was 790. Um, that goal has gone up by less than 100%, uh, but we've got a 400 to 500% increase in sites. Is there a reason why the expectations of what each site is going to accomplish has gone down so dramatically?
So I would say that I, I don't think that the, I would say that the expectation for what the number of mediations, uh, has not gone down. Um, I would say that I would need to check in with the Safe Street scene, uh, team to get a, an understanding of what might have happened. Is it, you know, periods where the sites were, there might have been some staffing, uh, uh, that might contribute to that number. There might have been just when a site has come online. So, uh, there are a number of factors that could, uh, explain why those numbers are, are that way. But I would say that the expectation, uh, I would never say the expectation has, has dropped for the number of mediations.
I, I only ask because it looks like back in fiscal 16, we were in a, we're, we were, we were in a situation where each Safe Street site was responsible for almost 400 successful mediations, which is great. Um, and you, you would think that if we were increasing to eight to 10 sites, we would be looking to get something in excess of 3,000. So only having 1,500 as the target does raise sort of a red flag. And so if you could get back to us with some more specifics on that, that would be appreciated. Um, I'd like to call on Mr. Segman, who, who apparently is the only person on this call who is not comfortable simply unmuting themselves and injecting themselves into the conversation when they have relevant data. I appreciate your, I appreciate your commitment to protocol.
Mr. Chair, maybe it's my years in Annapolis, but, uh, I know that you don't speak in a hearing unless you are recognized by the Chair. And, uh, I, I just, I, I did want to go back to the previous request. Uh, I, I have noted it. We will try to find some, uh, responsive data to the question about the City Watch cameras. But, uh, I, I did want to pass a note that I just received from, uh, Deputy Chief of Staff Sunny Schnitzer. Uh, she did want me to remind you, um, obviously, when you're looking at prosecutions, successful prosecutions, there are, uh, many, many different types of evidence that contributes to those. City Watch cameras may be a factor. Uh, you know, we're not sure that we will be able to provide responsive information to say there are X number of prosecutions that, but for City Watch cameras or that City Watch cameras contributed to. So.
I get that. And that, in, in, in all, in all fairness, I'm going to actually be effectively giving the City Watch cameras the benefit of the doubt that if they were involved in a successful prosecution, that's going to be a point in their favor. But I would like to know that if a City Watch camera was involved in a, in an arrest, but then wasn't involved in a successful prosecution, um, there's a question of whether or not that counts, that should count as the City Watch camera actually being helpful.
Okay. No, I mean, I understand what, what the intention of the, the question is. Um, you know, I, again, I, I'm not sure that we will be able to provide data that is responsive in exactly that way. And, and I do want the committee to recognize that, that's sort of a heavy data lift, but, uh, we, we are going to try to get you whatever we can.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're going back over to the top of the list now, so we're going to Vice Chair Pinkett. Do you have more questions for M O C J?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Henry. I have two questions. But the first question is in reference to Service 617 Criminal Justice Coordination, uh, performance measure, number of juvenile shooting and homicide victims in Baltimore City, which I thought was a pretty peculiar measure. which I thought was a pretty peculiar measure. Um, but in fiscal 2019, it has target of 40 and the actual 48, um, with a target of 40 in 2020. But then it looks like we're not utilizing that measure anymore. So can you speak to, I guess, why we decided not to use the measure? And then what, what are we doing to help prevent, uh, juvenile shooting and homicides?
So I'll respond to the, the second one first. In regards to how we are preventing juvenile shootings and, and homicides, I would say that one, our, uh, Safe Streets team and is one major, uh, effort uh, that speaks or works directly toward that goal. And so we are, you know, with every mediation, for instance, they are, um, there could be a gun present, I believe a statistic is about 75% of these mediations, there could have resulted in a gun, uh, you know, in a, in a shooting or at least a gun was present. So Safe Streets is an important element for, for that. Uh, R O C A is, is, and we did already talk about the fact that we do need to, and I, I understand that wholeheartedly, that we need to see the benchmarks, we need the evaluation to understand the impact. But R O C A is working to, uh, stand in the way of, of that by actually working with high-risk individuals who would be likely to be, uh, the, in the age range for both, go outside of juvenile. So Safe Streets is 14 to about 25 and R O C A is 16 to about 25. But still there's a, a chunk of youth there that, um, that they are, uh, working with. Um, but there are also a number of other things that are, um, uh, related to services and, and how we are working with youth to provide them with supports. And so even in our youth justice work, we're looking at the services that are there for youth to help them, um, uh, you know, to provide the supports that make them, that allow them to make better choices or deal with the issues at hand, uh, that underlie the, the end result, right? So by the time there's a, a shooting, there's all these other things that need to be taken care of first, right? And that were underlying issues. So those are opportunities for us to, to work with on that. Um, also, just in coordinating with partners, like, uh, internally, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, being on the youth cabinet where there's an active, uh, uh, effort right now to work, bring up a number of stakeholders together to create these plans that focus on a number of elements, uh, that affect youth. And so some of them are, what are the, uh, opportunities that youth have? What are some of the activities and supports that they need? And again, looking at, um, other supports and services. So I would say that we have programs that deal with the actual conflict, like Safe Streets. We have R O C A that's looking at how they, we could help them make better decisions. Um, and then there are a number of other, uh, underlying, uh, opportunities to look at what is happening and our services, activities, um, using the help of community-based organizations to, uh, work with youth to provide them with opportunities to address some of those other needs.
So, so, but it looks like we're not measuring that, we, we're not utilizing that as a measure meant going forward?
That's something that I will, I will have to look into that and, and follow up. I would say that that, I agree that that would be a good measure for us to, to use. Um, and so that should be a, a measure that we are, we continue to use. But I will look into
Okay.
the history of how that was removed as, uh, as a measure.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my, my second question is in reference to Service 758. And part of the narrative for that service says that the agency monitors the efficacy of grant-funded programs on behalf of the Baltimore Police Department. So can you tell us which programs, um, you, you have, I guess, monitored that you consider to be the most effective?
And so for 758, can you say that one more time?
So it says that the, this particular agency monitors the efficacy of grant-funded programs on behalf of the Baltimore Police Department. I'm, I'm curious from your analysis, which programs have proven to be, be the most effective?
So that's a, a good question. That's a question I would really have to unpack and, and, and look at. So I would have to go through the history of what we've evaluated and, uh, and the programs that we evaluated. And it sounds like you're saying that are specifically B P D.
Well, I'm just going by what it appears that, and, and part of my question is that, and I could be wrong, typically programs are either piloted or funded for a period of time and then they become the responsibility of, you know, in this case, you know, local government. And so it, it'd be to our benefit to know from your analysis which programs are the most effective so that, you know, when the ask ultimately comes, will we continue these programs? We, we're, uh, making that decision from a, from a position of data.
Okay, and, and just so I, uh, understand, this is B P D programs that we have evaluated?
Correct.
That's the question. Okay.
Yes.
So what I would say is that's something I would definitely have to come back on and check the, the history of those programs that we have evaluated, evaluated, um, that are B P D programs. And what are, what we have found or what did the evaluation show as the most effective? So I could take that away as another follow-up.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman Henry.
Thank you. Uh, next up would be, uh, Councilwoman Middleton. Do you have more questions?
Just one, just one. Um, I noticed that you don't have many federal grant help. And I know that agencies like, um, you know, the Office of Employment Development, Homeland Services and so on, you had a lot of federal grants. And I would think with your subject matter, you could easily seek, um, some federal grant help. Did you want, could you speak on that?
Sure. Um, earlier I mentioned that we have hired a grants and contracts administrator. And I think that that is where a lot of this opportunity lies. Um, acknowledging and knowing that, that M O C J has historically been a grants, uh, attracted a lot of grants, won a lot of grants. And with grants that allows you to innovate, that allows you to try new things, that allows you to support initiatives. And so that is definitely something that we have our eye on toward. And I think the first step, when I came into M O C J, was getting a grants and contract, a strong grants and contract manager into the role. Um, and so we've done that. There's some groundwork that we are laying, um, internally. But yes, I think there's a, a, a great opportunity for us to now look at how we could, uh, go after and possibly win grants to support some of the many, like you said, the subject matter, there would be good grants that could help us in our efforts.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Um, we are at 5:01 and this hearing was scheduled till 5 o'clock. Uh, are there any other councilmembers who absolutely positively need to ask their question now and not rely on the agency or M O D R to get that information back to us at a later time? All right, hearing none and seeing none. Uh, I want to thank M O C J for, uh, their work. And we're going to go into recess until 5:30 when we will come back with the hearing for the Baltimore Police Department. We are in recess. Thank you.
Thank you.